Yes, I don't have it.
Come on.
But in the it just all worked out. It is some here and so we'll note that. I appreciate you coming, thank you. Um, we do have uh two point four recognitions, but before that, do we wanna take the items out of order? Do you want to appreciate first?
We don't have any recognitions this time.
Okay, so we'll take um item six point one out of order.
I'll give you a minute, Crystal. Sorry.
It's okay.
I just wanna say how proud I am um of our new trustee. We have already presented together. We we had a community event that we commit, we presented together. And she did an outstanding job, just absolutely outstanding representing the college. Um, so we're off to a great start.
Wow.
Good.
Congratulations, Ms. Farmer. And if you would be so kind as to join me right behind Lindsay, cause that is the only place the camera will see you.
Okay.
And then we will invite you to have a seat at the table somewhere, which is right beside, yes, right there, okay?
You may go over by Mr.
Maybe over your wall. And then you'll get a good picture right there.
One like me. Wow, wow, my phone's better.
Look at your wall.
I know, but I wanna be one of mine.
She's good. She has all the time. Okay, so. I, Crystal Farmer.
I, Crystal Farmer.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Um, and student trustee farmer, the only attachment, we do have an attachment that they got added to the agenda, and that was our budget presentation. And we have some extra copies over here. So that's.
Yeah.
And an agenda too.
Yes.
I was I was struck by that oath. Because it says that we, and I've give, I've taken it many times myself. But it seems to restrict my my ability to defend the Constitution uh against enemies. What about people who are just wrong?
Those are your enemies.
I think I think definitely by definition enemies.
Yeah, they do. Yeah. Definitely.
Yeah.
And.
By definition.
We don't have that in the print. Well, thank you for joining. And those of you that don't know, we have Crystal's daughter and her mother, so.
Future state college.
Say hi, mom.
Yes.
Say hi. She's shiny. Yeah.
So welcome, welcome to the S P C family, the extended family now. Um, well, we have no public comments. And that brings us to item four point, minutes of the regular meeting of May tenth and the special meeting of May fifteenth and June sixth. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Second, it's been moved in second that we approve minutes of the regular meeting of May tenth and the special meeting of May fifteenth and June sixteenth, a discussion.
June sixth.
Yes, June sixth, thank you, Margaret. Is there any discussion? Okay. All in favor? Uh, opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item five point one, Academic Senate Planning and Resources Committee, faculty's experience with aging facilities.
We have spent a lot of time talking about facilities uh at a very grand um kind of strategic planning perspective. But the missing link in all of our conversations so far has been the user perspective. And so we reached out to the Academic Senate Planning and Resource Committee um to be able to get a perspective from uh the user perspective. And uh we've got Professor Katie Loris that is here to um talk about some things that she has gathered up relative to comments and such from faculty. So Katie, if you would.
Uh, thank you. Thanks very much for um asking for faculty input on this issue. Uh, it's one that we sometimes um overlook, but it's but it obviously has such a profound impact on both our faculty, our students, and everyone who comes to our campus. I'm sure yourselves included. Um, over, I've been on uh the Planning and Resources Committee for many, many years, and I've been the chair for the past couple of years. Um, and over the years, as we look at requests for equipment, I must say it's been an ongoing theme for people to discuss issues that they have with, as you've said, the aging facilities. There are many requests for fans uh in places where the air conditioner never work. Um, there are requests uh when the West Campus building came up, there were many people who talked about their experiences, whether it was Patricia Stark talking about the water coming in on the channels lab, or others who just discussed what it meant to try to juggle teaching with dealing with um the issues inherent to their buildings. Um, this spring, however, our discussions came to uh a more kind of pointed level of conversation with the discussion about the two projects. One being in the sort of the final stages at the state level and the other being in the initial stages. The final stages being the P E building and the initial one being the Student Services Building. Um, so I I will tell you that unanimously and um Planning and Resources has representation from every division on campus. Um, unanimously, the faculty was completely behind moving forward, if possible, on these two projects and were um excited about the prospects of of what this would mean to our students and our faculty. Um, there's, of course, there's no doubt that when you invest in facilities on campus, it has a such a manifest effect, it's writ large, that this campus cares about its students and cares about its faculty. Um, that it, you could hardly find a a more bold statement that resources are going to be invested, that make a real difference in people's lives and and are somehow um elevating in terms of the spirits of those who walk the halls or in the classroom, um, et cetera. Uh, some of the things that came up as we discussed this were, um, you know, uh, this is not pertaining to Student Services, but I will say that um one email that I wanted to share with you that was sent to me by uh Jamie Campbell, who you may know who's the uh chair of the Mathematics Department. When I asked him um directly about faculty response to aging facilities, this is what he said. The lack of air conditioning in the I D C building is emblematic of the sorry state of the facilities on this campus. This building sits in the sun like a kiln, and our classrooms, which ring the outside of the building, bear the brunt of this thermal radiation. They are so hot at times that students cannot pay attention to lectures. I have seen students' notes that are illegible because the sweat from their forearms smears whatever they have written. Some students come to class with miniature fans that sit on their desks so that they can bear the temperature but cause a distraction to themselves and others. All windows and doors must be open, leaving the class susceptible to noises from the halls and the ground surrounding the building. We have requested that the A C, that A C be installed in this building numerous times over the years. I can testify to that because it's come up so many times in P and R, um, to no avail. It is unconscionable that faculty, staff, but most importantly, students, are forced to undergo such temperature extremes to perform their job and go to school. Um, in terms of um Student Services, which I know is sort of uh on the back burner, but we hope maybe gets moved towards the front. Um, uh, a faculty survey and staff survey was done pertaining to some of the issues that are um endemic to that building. Um, one thing that people said was that, uh, and this is uh an issue all over campus, even in the drama, the new drama music building, uh sewage issues. It's unpleasant, isn't it, to even think about that? But um but sewage issues are manifest throughout this campus. And and uh it's experienced in many of the bathrooms, going in the bathrooms. Student Services actually report, again, I hate to bring this up, I guess we're a few hours from lunch, but uh bubbling up of sewage even around the the building. Um, less maybe, you know, horrific, but still um problematic is that there are just not enough offices in that building. I've experienced that, um, you know, we have such a wonderful head of the Transfer Center, Angela Warren, amazing, amazing person. Um, but uh they have this rotating system of offices that they're having to uh e- employ in that building because there's just not enough, they're doing like a sort of round robin of moving offices. Uh, I know in D S P S there aren't enough faculty offices, so often the tests have to occur in the faculty offices, of which there's already such a a scarce supply. Um, there's not enough dedicated workspace for hourly staff and student workers. Um, the Transfer Center doesn't have a space for visiting university representatives. Of course, we welcome these people from universities um across the country to to come and and interact uh with our Transfer Center, but there's no place for them to meet or or to um to be welcomed to. And in fact, one of the major things that hit home to me when Student Services was talking was they said that space is the sort of threshold for so many people, new people coming to campus, whether it's students or parents. And i- it's unfortunate that it can't be a a space that can be more welcoming and um feels like we're setting our best foot forward as people come to campus. Um, there's a number of safety issues um in the Student Service Building, including um uh the Transfer Center, people are concerned that there's no way to close doors if any issue came up. Um, uh, there are issues with wheelchair access, particularly poignant because of course D S P S is located there. Um, there's, again, unpleasant sort of hygienic things about the bathroom smelling, leaks through the ceiling because of the utilities closet. And I think another point to keep in mind with that is that as we embark on this new initiative of guided pathways, which is at its heart about equity and open access and making our campus um a a clear through line to entering our campus, to engaging, to registering, to um beginning the path on whichever way our s- new students um feel is appropriate for them, that this space as that first step is is a problematic one at the moment. And so as we, as a campus, embark on this new way to to open our doors um to to access, that that it's a bit problematic. Um, so those are the student um service uh things. And again, the Student Services faculty staff were really completely behind um moving forward to try at some point in the future to um have the, have an opportunity to reimagine that space. Um, I don't wanna take up too much of your time, so I wanna turn this over to Kathy O'Connor, who can more directly address the P E building.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the board, Dr. Beebe. First of all, I apologize, I'm in my riding gear. I came from Moore Park just now from a lesson, so anyway, I'm sorry about that. Uh, thank you very much for your time um to make this short presentation. I have a statement I'd like to read. Uh, the state-supported project to replace our sports pavilion is a very exciting proposal for our faculty and staff. Even though we realize the challenges of this project, we also know that we cannot remodel ourselves out of the overwhelming issues we deal with on a daily basis. The building's current architecture physically demonstrates demonstrates the cultural and gender bias of the nineteen seventies. Our building does not meet the needs of our female students and our students with disabilities. Title IX violations are evident throughout our building. In the words of Ellen O'Connor, our Associate Athletic Director, the building is a museum to bias of all kinds. We have re- uh utilized every available closet and miscellaneous space for faculty offices and small classrooms. The infrastructure is woefully inadequate. Heating and air, as well as boilers for hot water, are in a state of repair more often than they are functional. The age of restrooms and compromised plumbing create unsafe and unhealthy conditions for our students and staff on a regular basis. And the seismic concerns are considerable. There is no way to fix those issues with a building like ours. The diversity of this building is huge. Our community depends on and uses our facility several times a week throughout the year. One of our staff members refers to our building as the front porch of the college because so many people come through our facility um not only daily, but on the weekends, three hundred, really all year long. The building supports lecture classes as well as activity classes, and the F T S generation is significant to the college. The full-time faculty and staff voted unanimously to support the replacement of our aged facility. And we are confident that you will agree with the decision to take advantage of the state-supported facility replacement project. And one of the things I was thinking on the way here today, it's like in our discipline, physical fitness, physical education, kinesiology, people can look healthy on the outside because you can print them all up. Uh, new clothes, new makeup, great. But that doesn't mean they're healthy on the inside. Healthy-looking people can drop dead walking out of the doctor's office. So what's inside, we've done a great job. I've gotta give all of our staff just amazing hands for what they have done to try to keep our building functional and looking pretty good. And we have put money into remodeling, but remodeling is not gonna fix the issues that we have. And this is an unbelievable opportunity that we have from the state to actually build a building that represents our college in the professional way it should. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to, I wanna thank both Professor Morris and O'Connor for that. I mean, they really did kind of capture the user aspects of of uh what we're up against with buildings. It's amazing to me when I saw the list of uh community folks that are using our building. Um, well, not individuals, but groups of people, high schools, junior highs, you know, community groups. You know, there's a, it's a page of of uh people that are using our building down there. The sports fielding is what I'm talking about in particular. Um, and it it really is sometimes, we we don't remember or think about the fact that it's broader than just us, that it is, you know, a big community connection for us. So I wanna make sure that's emphasized.
Yeah, no, I mean, I agree, the basketball camp that's running for the kids in a couple of weeks. And so, you know, as a mom, cause we, and so you do, you think where the kid's gonna go. And so the coaches put a lot of thought when they publicize these things to let you know where the kid's gonna go have a snack, where they're gonna go to the restroom, where they're gonna do all these different things. And so I think that as our flight department continues to offer like the baseball camps they do at Pershing and the 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 different camps that are going on, basketball that the kids and the parents need because parents have to go to work, but even if you don't have to work, go to work, the kids can't be home. They just can't. And so the more that I think our athletic department can do to open that up in the summertime is gonna be huge for kids in the community and to develop a healthy lifestyle of activity, which is key to them, you know, to perform better in school. So.
Yep.
Thank you for highlighting that, cause I have seen firsthand how that is truly important and people really benefit from that. Um, does the board have any questions or any comments?
Thank you for sharing.
Um, Katie, I'm wondering about Planning and Resources in general, whether you have had an opportunity to kind of collect and and work with um uh Student Services folks the infrastructure needs. You mentioned the sewer, you mentioned I D C and the H VAC issues. Um, a collective sense of what those issues are and which ones we rank most important as affecting our students the most, which I think would be very helpful for the board in in thinking about how to spend our money. Uh. We have to make choices here and.
Well, yeah.
And I would just be be interested in being informed by user views of those critical elements.
I I guess, I I mean, again, uh, the comments about, let's see, the bathrooms, the comments about sewage smells and manifestation, multiple, multiple comments about really problematic high temperatures. Looked due to lack of uh air conditioning. I mean, it's hard to, it's hard to prioritize those, right? Because they're all pretty primal, isn't it?
Well, I agree, it's not easy to do. I'm just, I don't know how many of our buildings, for example, I know I D C comes up a lot.
Mm-hmm.
But how many other buildings? And and I know we're assessing that in the facility master plan, but but I'm also thinking about kind of the user sense of it there. Uh, have these these issues here discussed?
Can I comment briefly? So.
Sure.
As you're aware, about a year ago now, we created BRAC, the Budget Resource Allocation Committee. And just recently, uh, we began working on, not creating because it did already exist, but forming a Facilities and Safety Committee. It did exist in a different, a different form than what I'm gonna be doing going forward, where those kinds of things can be discussed in a shared governance format like we do with other committees. I've been working with uh Patricia Stark to have her pick some faculty to be on that committee. And we'll be working on the prioritizations of the various facilities projects that we're talking about. And that'll be a great forum for folks to be able to come to and explain what their concerns are and what the issues are. And I'm sure we'll work with closely with P and R as well. But that'll be a a a new thing for this year, that we're really gonna use that committee to focus on prioritizing the different issues we have across campus on, for facilities and safety.
That sounds like a great idea, um, because you can bring people together.
Yeah.
Hear those problems.
Yeah.
I don't like hearing that you've been asking about I D C for years and it hasn't happened.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, but true. Um, we've talked about making even a Google Doc where people could add sort of specific instances of contact with major problems. Continue.
Yes, just a second.
Uh, it's worth noting that the uh the people who designed the I D C uh without air conditioning never had to work in it.
That's true with most of our buildings.
Yeah, I and I, I think there's a lesson there somewhere. Kathy, I'm, I mean, one of the things that we've been wrestling with is, yes, we have, we have a, we have a strong statement of s- of state support, significant numbers of dollars behind it to uh to completely raise the building and putting it up there. We've also had an estimate of about six million dollars to revise and restructure it. I'd be interested in your view about, perhaps with an example, what is it that such an effort, such a, you you, there there are many arguments against this, what I'm suggesting, but is there an example that you would provide that would show us that uh this isn't our work?
Well, like I said, it's, I think it's very hard to remodel your way out of some of the really extreme issues that we have. I, when I think of sitting in my office and an earthquake coming, there's nothing that's gonna save me. That building's gonna go down. And our consultant said, well, it probably won't completely go down, but you won't be able to save it. So what that tells me is, I'm, it's probably gonna be my tomb, which is fine, you know, I've been here a long time. If you just submit it up and put my, put a little sign there, that's great. But I don't think, I think that's one of the big issues. I know as a division, when we meet every year, we go through a lot of the safety things and we have all the people come and tell us what we should do. And I've gotta tell you, I I'm worried about where we'll all go. Secondly, I don't know what we do about some of the gender equity issues we have. The locker room situation, like I, like Ellen remarked, is, you know, the bias was built, was built into that building. And so how we correct some of those biases with a building that was ill-designed to begin with? And you know that because look at all the wasted space. I mean, we have a rooftop that's useless to us. We have a patio that we have a barbecue on twice, twice a year. Um, we do, we have offices in, uh, my office is in a custodial closet. We have an office in the press box. Uh, we have a men's locker room that's got wasted space and and no really observational area to make sure it's safe. We don't have any access to the uh women's, to the train room for women uh on the interior as we do for the, for the men. Disability access is pathetic. Our restrooms are really not able to deal with a lot of the disability issues that we have. Uh, we have, you know, other uh transgender issues that we've been dealing with and trying to meet the letter of the law in ways that it's almost impossible with how our building is configured. So it, we have security issues that are a problem. We have uh uh areas, like I said, in the men's locker room where we really don't know what's going on most of the time. We try, we have wonderful staff. I mean, I I couldn't ask for a better department than the people we have, but there's only so much we can do.
And you're convinced that a building modification is not, under no circumstances will deal with the issues you raise.
I don't think anybody's gonna give us a go-ahead on seismic issues with that building for six million dollars. That, just that alone is frightening. All the other issues, and I've got, and I really have to thank the college because the remodel for the classrooms to actually give us lecture rooms, which we do lecture, you know, surprisingly enough in physical education. We have a, quite a broad range of lecture classes. We have classrooms, which we really appreciate. We got a new life fitness center, which we really appreciate. Um, but that's just one little part, and it sort of left everything else, you know, struggling. And the repair people are there every frickin' day. We've had repair people parked out there trying to work on the boilers and the air. You know, we don't have air conditioning in our offices. Our faculty upstairs can't work in their offices upstairs because there's no air conditioning. But just to keep our water going, the hot water, the plumbing is old. They can't fix the showerheads anymore because they'd have to re-plumb everything in that building to make water actually come out of our showers. So, you know, I mean, hey, we'll take anything, but I hate to do any more piecemeal. I think it's a waste to do piecemeal stuff at this point.
Okay. So what what uh was ultimately of concern to me was the the list that was read at the beginning. Katie read quite a laundry list of things that that we should take note of. I mean, I I I I would hope that we would have that list included in our minutes so that we could actually look at each specific item. Um, and some of those items are safety items. I mean, if there's.
Well, the health and safety issue of the plumbing and the sewage, we have Carol's Plumbing. We probably have a contract with them because they're at our building almost every week because the stuff bubbles, like she said, bubbles out of our hallway.
Oh, gosh, that happens so many times. Yeah.
Right outside our locker room. And they're there all the time. So, and and, you know, we don't have the staff and the so forth to deal with all that, so Carol's loves us.
I bet. Yeah, really.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to mention, um, and Kathy, I know you've had a long list there and I'm just focused on one of them, which is, I also recognize that you express a serious discomfort with what would happen seismically if we had an earthquake. What I wanted to kind of go to, however, was that the board was told at the meeting when we had a tour by the engineer who did the second tier of engineering evaluation of the building, that it would not fall down. It would get some damage, nobody would be hurt. And um they wouldn't red-take it, they would make us fix it, but they wouldn't red-take it. So, you know, the image of the building falling down on the, on our staff and our students was not what he conveyed. And I just wanted people to recognize that um I can understand how you can feel like that can't be true, but at the same time, this is what he advised. So I wanted to be clear, because if I thought it would fall down, like you're talking about, I wouldn't want us to be using it right now. I mean, that's not. I mean, that's not safe, so I would say, gosh, if it's in that situation, we can't use it.
Right. I hope you're right.
Yeah, I know, well, I'm just, that's the engineering, so.
I'm all right.
Well, yeah, thank you, Dr. B B, cause this is, um, I mean, I think all the sequence of the presentation information has been timely and appropriate and.
Mm-hmm.
And this is tough, but not tough, it's only tough because there isn't a pocket of infinite money. Um other than that, I'm like, get more camps in there and fix the showers, cause I myself am kind of special when it comes to bathrooms and showers, and so I understand, you know, cause.
I think we're all like that.
Cause you're, you're working out and you're, you're athletes, and then you get in there, then after that, you're gonna class, it's just a whole other life of, you know, training and then studying, so. Um thank you guys, Justine, Farman, did you have any comments to add? I know you're new and it's probably all settling in, but you feel free to just point this.
I was just wondering, yes, I know we offer, we opened up our showers to the homeless students, so I'm even wondering, were they even able to take showers, or did they utilize the facility?
Um, yes, we have, we have a a handful of homeless students, and we have a whole process to allow students. Even uh students in the extended learning program, we've opened our showers to them. And yes, you know, they can use the showers, and and like I said, our staff does a great job of trying to go in and and get things working. Sort of a funny example is, you know, during the the fire and the flood and all the other trauma and, you know, locusts and whatever. Um I was out of my house for almost sixty days, so I would come here occasionally, try to take a shower. And it's like, either had boiling hot water or really cold water, so I was sort of jumping from shower to shower. And if you have that sort of mental image, it's sort of funny, right? But after you have lived at Earl Warren Showgrounds for a couple of weeks, you'd really like to just stand under a shower. And the, you know, poor, you know, Mark and Josh, I mean, they, they've, they've tried to sort of fix things, and so now there's a couple of showerheads that actually work pretty good, and the staff, women's staff. Well, you know, shower room that's down there at the end of the hall, it's just, it's just challenging, I mean, you can't fix some things, it's like in your house. You know, to a certain point, you gotta replace the plumbing. And to take, go into that building and replumb that building is, it's gonna be more than six million dollars. So that's, I think, that the the cost, you know, the balance here, it it's it's hard for you, I I get that. But boy, when are we gonna do it if not now? If we turn that money down now, we'll never get it again. So you got a one-shot deal here, and you know, I'm not a gambling person, but I think I'd take a gamble on this one.
Thank you, thank you, you guys, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's really good to hear directly from the people who work there, cause I'm here twice a month, three times a month, you're here every day eight hours, so I can't, I.
I've been here every day for forty years.
Yeah, I know. So I can't, I can't tell you what it's like, or that if you feel safe or comfortable there, so thank you for speaking to us about, I love to hear about other buildings on campus, because.
Great.
We, I've, I have heard it anecdotally so much, that the buildings on campus are not up to. At SBCC, I've never had to have, you know, it being too hot, but.
We can fix it, we can fix that.
I'll sign up, I'll sign up for this summer and I'll experience it, yeah, but it's, yeah, it's not, it's not okay, it's.
You're free.
The fall, definitely, the fall.
I'll have to be online in the summer.
I'll take it at my house, so avoid, but yeah, no, I think we need to be seriously addressing, not just this, but other facilities, yeah.
And and thank you just for bringing that awareness to the board, cause I'm a student here, and I didn't even know about that, or have I heard any other students, so. You just let me know that I need to be in a student government, visit these buildings more and realize what's going on, cause I was not aware of that either.
Well, thank you everyone for working together.
Thank you.
So was my suggestion acceptable, I mean, I, what I'm asking for is a careful assessment of this laundry list of things that we have.
Yeah. Yeah.
And some of them are safety issues, and we would be, I think negligent if we didn't take action on some of those items today or tomorrow, latest. So noted, we, I, I made eye contact with Angie, and I know that she's, she's gonna pull that list out for us, we'll have that. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Cool. And get that to Lindsay and be able to work through that, like you say.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's like Jedi talk, you know, they just look at each other.
Yeah. I know. Eight, ten hours a day, we hit that.
Yeah, like that. Good, oh good, okay, well, that brings us to our number five point two, Lindsay and James, you guys are up. We have waited for your presentation and we are so excited.
Well, I feel guilty that I'm the queen.
Yeah.
I love you too.
You've been waiting for the presentation, I've been waiting for the presentation.
Man. Okay. So, hold on one second, I'm actually gonna put my little timer on here, because I wanna uh make sure I don't get off track. Okay, and I have the clicker, I guess, all right.
Yeah.
All right, I'm just gonna jump into it, so, everybody kinda ready? I noticed the largest typo in the world is on the very first page, that should say eighteen nineteen, I apologize, the very cover page says seventeen eighteen. It should say eighteen nineteen, I'm just gonna fess up, the biggest typo I've ever made is on the cover page. Sorry about that, we'll fix that for next time.
We checked all the details on every other page.
So, this has been the most unusual budget experience I've ever had, and I have confirmed with my colleagues at other community colleges and attended a conference in the end of May that. I'm not the only CBO who feels like this is the strangest budget development process we've ever been through for the last six months. So I'm gonna talk about the, what's been going on with our budget and why it's been so unusual, and why the board hasn't been seeing the budget as expected. Our other committees have not been seeing the budget as they usually do, CPC and all of our various groups, because it's been very hard for us to put together a budget. Uh with the situations going on at the state level, so. Some brief history, we could talk about just this topic for hours, so we'll keep it short, I know most folks are kind of aware of what's been going on. But in January, when the first budget came out, which is usually a, you know, gives us a good indication of what the budget's gonna be in May when it's finalized. But it could, they can change a lot between January and May, so in January, the governor proposed that we would have a completely new funding formula. And it would be split, basically, uh right now, we're used to getting funded based on our FTS, okay? The number of students we have, the full-time equivalent student uh number. And the new funding formula that he proposed would be fifty percent of our funding would be based on the base funding or FTS. And twenty-five percent, and the additional twenty-five percent would be funded on on new metrics, on performance metrics, on showing that. Our students are transferring, they're getting degrees, they're completing certificates, and also on uh kind of their, their, their income, if they're low-income students. So this was a a dramatic new approach to a funding formula. Some prelimin- preliminary numbers were sent out to the community colleges on how much money community colleges would receive from this, and a part of this was also new money, which is great. And we got our first round of numbers, and the 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 funny part of the story is they sent out the wrong file the first time. And they sent out the one that would show all the winners and all the losers, and it was really discouraging, because many, many community colleges would lose millions and millions of dollars of funding with this formula. Uh so many of us kind of panicked, and hey, even though we or our neighbor might be a winner, someone else is a loser, and we're not okay with that, we want our whole system to be strong. So that was immediately uh taken down, and a new version was put up afterward with a a provision that the schools that would lose money would be held harmless, and that they wouldn't lose money in the first year. Uh so new numbers were put up, but, you know, there's a lot of consternation about it and confusion and concern, it's like, well, it's only the January revise, maybe between now and May. Uh it won't be in there, or it will be, but this is a big deal to change a hu- you know, one of the largest systems in the state, the entire funding uh process. So, in the May revise, we, it was in the May right revise again, the new funding formula, we thought, wow, okay, this is, you know, getting closer to happening. There was a new split, it was sixty twenty twenty, same concept, but a slightly different split. But as soon as that May revise was published, which is normally when uh folks like our controller here, James Zavis, and I go, oh, we're, we're done with the budget, here's our revenues, we've got the information. You know, within minutes, the emails were flying, we can't use this, there's just not enough information, it doesn't make sense, we don't actually have the dollar amounts yet from the governor. Of how much money we would get, we still, there's not enough information to know how in the world this would work. So, um then something unusual happened, cause like I said, normally May, that's it, we've got the revise, we keep going. But we were told, no, don't, you can't, you can't build your budget based on this, there's a huge chance it won't go through. So I got to learn about legislative process of what happens when everyone doesn't agree at the state level. The, yeah, the assembly subcommittee rejected it, the proposal, the senate subcommittee rejected the proposal. So I learned there's something called a conference committee that meets after that, when those to reject something that the governor wants. And the conference committee met and agreed that it would go forward with some additional provisions. So this has been a tumultuous ride with all of us on the phone and calling our colleagues and checking emails and news every day, wondering. How are we gonna get the tentative budget finished, what is it gonna be, and is it our new funding formula that is, is looking like we'll get a lot more revenue, or is it the old funding formula where we don't? So, it's been a, it's been exciting, uh and luckily for us, we feel like it, it turned out on the, on the right side for us, because the new funding formula is going through. And it should be additional revenues for us, so we're all kind of happy, uh we're waiting anxiously for that information. We don't know a lot about it right now, actually, what's on this slide is about all we know right now, so we're still waiting for a lot more information. So the split that they're proposing is actually seventy twenty ten, uh same, same concept as this slide, same order. But instead of fifty twenty-five twenty-five, the seventy twenty-ten, that's right there in that first bullet point. And then also, it would be phased in over the next few years, so no numbers have been released yet on what that means for us, dollar-wise, what revenue we will be receiving for eighteen nineteen. And no uh, no simulations, no explanation for how, the intricacy of determining what our funding will be on that twenty-ten, it's quite complex, because when you talk about. We're gonna fund you based on a a low-income student, well, how do you figure out how that student's low-income? Are we gonna use, you know, pell grants, bog, what, how is that gonna be calculated, and how are we gonna determine that? Um and then same with certificates, you know, okay, so someone got a certificate, it's, it's complex, it's not gonna be easy just to snap our fingers and come up with. How these numbers are gonna work for us going forward, so many of the CBOs were, were chatting weekly now with our phone calls, trying to figure out what are the simulations gonna look like? What is the state gonna give us that's gonna help us figure this out, um so, we're, there's still a handful of unknowns. But again, the good parts are that uh more money has gone into the system for us, so. All the community colleges will get more money out of this, and that's what we were really worried about, that if it didn't go through, we wouldn't get that additional money, so the COLA of two point seven one is in the uh budget. And a hundred and seventy-five million ongoing funds as well to help fund this, and also a hundred and four million to hold colleges harmless, so no one goes below what their previous funding level was. So there's been very good, some very wonderful modifications to uh the budget throughout the last six months, okay?
That was a good introduction, Lindsay, you led up to life, and then it's like, dun, but then it went through.
I should be a storyteller, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
Budget storyteller.
Should read a lot. Horror story.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say let Lindsay go through her presentation, and then, but start, I, I gave you the hard copy so you can write down, and then you can say, oh, Lindsay's.
Yeah, let me keep going.
Yeah. It's very.
Whatever, but let her go through, and that would be.
Yeah, there, there's a lot, let me, let me keep trying to get through, so, this slide is really important, so what is, what does this mean for our process? We're used to reviewing the budget many times by now, it really being solid, us knowing exactly what's going on, uh so we've had our anxiety about that. So what that means for us today and at the next board meeting, is that we're gonna be looking at a tentative budget that doesn't have the new funding formula built in, we don't even know what the number is, we don't have it. Um I polled all my colleagues, unfortunately, we're, we're not the only community college in this, in this dynamic right now. My colleagues have already approved their tentative budgets at their board meetings in this same way, based on the old funding formula, because that's all we have right now. And it is required for ed code that we approve the bu- a tentative budget by June thirtieth, so we've gotta do it. And uh I'm getting into my next slide here, but the other piece that's really important, the good news of this is that when you see the deficit that's in this tentative budget. That won't be the deficit, we know we're getting more money, I don't know the dollar amount, but it will help with our deficit, so it won't be nearly as bad as it's looking here. And this is what I was kind of getting into a minute ago, so this summer is going to be a really important time period for us, we're gonna be. Doing, I'm sure, a ton of work, learning about these simulations, how they're gonna calculate it, and building those into a model on our own for projections going forward. So over the summer, we'll be working on that, we'll be bringing to the board on, at the August ninth meeting, kind of a first round of the, of the adopted budget, which will be our actual budget, you know? Uh and then we'll review it again August twenty-third, just so we have a chance to see it more than once, cause it's gonna be new for all of us. And then that adopted budget does need to be adopted by the board at the September thirteenth meeting, not the end of the month, because per ed code, it actually has to be adopted by September fifteenth. So that's why it's always at the first September board meeting. So that's what we have going on with the uh funding formula, quite, quite exciting. And I'm very relieved it turned out in the direction we were hoping for. So, on to the five-year projections, and I know all of us were, you know, anticipating and hoping to see the five-year projections today, and over the last many months. This has really put a stall on us being able to do five-year projections, we'd been planning on doing them multiple times over the year, and ever since January, it was like, well, how would we, how would we do them? What would they be based on, so what I have here on this slide is our last version of the five-year projections. It's the best we can do right now in on, in terms of projections, because we just don't know what our revenues are gonna look like going forward. So this is just kind of a refresher of what we were expecting quite a while ago now, back in September. And if you look at eighteen nineteen, we were expecting a three point three million dollar deficit uh for eighteen nineteen. And we had baked into that a handful of uh different assumptions that we're gonna go over in a minute as well, as kind of a reminder. So, it's really kind of frustrating when you look at the budget versus the projections, so we, we built our tentative budget. And our budget process now is, it's different than it was when I first started here, when I first started here, we did, you know, eighty-seven percent of our budget is, is employees. And we've gotta get that right, and it's not hard to get right, we know who our employees are, we know what they cost, we know what their medical benefits cost, et cetera. So in the past, the focus on the budget was that piece, and the other thirteen percent was, you know, it was pretty much the same every year. But now, with us starting BRAC, and with us really focusing on these projections and wanting to have a really accurate budget. We dive into every single line item, so this tentative budget is, i- is really detailed and firm, you know, there's, there's no fluff in it. There's, you know, every single department, especially like academic departments, you know, they have maybe a three hundred dollar supplies budget, there's not much there at all. So, with a, with a budget, every year when we do a budget, it's from, from the bottom up, and very detailed creates, it takes us months and months to create. Now, the projections that we've started doing, on the other hand, are kind of a whole different approach. They are taking the most current budget we have, so in this example, the next projections we do will be based on our eighteen nineteen budget. And all we do with the projections is, my kind of goal to help all of us understand the projections is to keep any changes to them really simple. You know, very few assumptions added on to the projections as we go out five years, so we go out five years with the projections. And uh what we have, what we've banked, baked into our projections last time around, were just a handful of savings that we had planned to try and get to a balanced budget. Because as everyone knows, we're deficit spending, we can't continue to do that, we need to get to a balanced budget. So we had baked in there just a handful of things, RAP, uh that's a whole nother conversation, so if I can explain that, if people have questions about that, but it's basically uh workforce reduction through a tip attrition plan. Where we really pay close attention to any positions that we're rehiring, we did the SERP a year and a half ago, where we did a retirement uh plan for folks. And we also had built in there reduction in hourly costs, we had built in there some educational efficiency savings in the way uh we uh. Handle our, our classes and and loading them, so we had just a few things, not, not hundreds, so it's easy for all of us to track why are the projections where they're at. And then, of course, FTS projections as well, because our revenues before came from solely our FTS. So that's how we created the previous projections, and the tough part now for all of us looking today at the tentative budget compared to what our last projections was. Our, is understanding the difference in why we're going from three point three million to a worse deficit. So, I led myself into this next slide, this is, this is high level, these are just estimates, but we, we. But, we, we did the best we could to explain. There's a lot of, a lot of little changes. People leave, people come, a lot of changes in, in the, in the salary model always. Um, but, these are the, the big items that were either not in the projections before, or weren't in the budget, or vice versa. So if you start at the top, our projected deficit from a while ago was three-point-three. And, these items either made the deficit worse or better, depending on which one, which one it is, getting us to what our tentative budget deficit is. So the first one was, we did have built into our projections changes in our apportionment, assuming we'd get a COLA or something every year, and that was a half-a-million. And with the lack of knowledge of what was going on with this new funding formula, that's not in the tentative budget, so that, that makes our deficit a half-million worse. The next one was, we actually did better than we expected with FTS generation, giving us more revenue. So that, that helps the deficit, that's the next one. The third one down there is, as I mentioned before, we had built into the projections savings on the hourly side. And we did so much work through BRAC and so much work in the prior year, tightening up the hourly budgets. We strategically decided that trying to save two-hundred-thousand dollars for hundreds of hours of work and cutting little tiny departments just wasn't gonna be effective. So we took that out and didn't reduce the hourly budget further. Uh, the next one, three-hundred-thousand, is the efficiency savings as well, that we included in the projections that we could see based on this year's trend of actual, that we're not gonna be able to do as well as we had hoped for next year. So we lowered that down. We do still have some savings built in there related to that, actually, I shouldn't say some, quite a bit, but not to the level. And then, uh, the next one is like a, it's a catch-twenty-two, it's good and bad. So, Melissa Moreno, Dr. Moreno, has done an amazing job boosting up the School of Extended Learning and really transitioning it over in two-years' time instead of three-years' time as planned. So our costs are going up, but we're generating more FTS. So, it's well worth it, but we're seeing that deficit get worse than we'd put in the projections. We'd put much less money, we did have an increase related to School of Extended Learning in the projections, but not to this level. So.
Kind of a front-end loaded situation, where we're investing in, in the School of Extended Learning sooner rather than, than later.
Yeah. So that one, okay, and then the last one, the, the, the biggest dollar amount and kind of one of the trickiest ones to, to wrap our heads around is, is RAP. No, internally and externally, everybody's like, how does RAP work? Um, so, we were really aggressive with what we put in the projections for RAP, and I'm really, you know, proud of us for what we accomplished this current year in seventeen-eighteen. The process, I feel, worked really well in terms of holding to what our plans were for our savings for the budget. Uh, I've talked to some colleagues at other schools who do a similar process, where they pool all of the vacant positions and rank them, like we're doing. But other schools only do it once a year, we're doing it twice a year, which is great. And what we did was the first, first round of RAP, which was back in fall, all these positions were requested, positions that became vacant, the different managers requested they be filled. And they were listed, and our chair here, Dr. Bishop, had them ranked by the committee, the RAP committee. And then those were submitted to Dr. Beebe for his decision on how many would be filled. And we really, uh, planned it out well, knowing that would be the largest round. So we saved over almost a million dollars of not, by not replacing positions, just that first round. And then this second time around, in the spring, RAP did their ranking as well, on additional new positions that had come up. And, since then, we've actually not, not done anything in terms of rehiring, we've rehired no one from that list because of the uncertainty with the new funding formula, our deficit being still, you know, substantial. And, um, waiting to see where we were gonna end up with this new funding formula. So we have saved the one-point, uh, sorry, the one-point-three-million that we had planned in the seventeen-eighteen time period, not replacing a substantial number of positions. So, now back to, to this number. In the projections, in projections, we planned that in eighteen-nineteen, we'd save another round of money for RAP when more people leave through attrition next year. But in the budget, we don't have next-year savings built in right now, because those people haven't left yet. So, the way we build the budget person by person by person, we wouldn't know who to take out to save the money, because we don't know who they are. Uh, we also don't know exactly how many people will leave, maybe it'll be more, maybe it'll be less. So, that number right there, when you see the deficit, the five-point-six, I kind of in my mind just immediately take off the one-point-three, because that's a projection for next year, that we do hope to save, but there was no way that we could figure out how to budget it in the tentative budget at this time. So, that's that. Keep going here. There's always so much to cover. It seems like it'll be so easy to, you know, go through this, but it's really, there's a lot to it. Okay. Some of us have become kind of familiar with reviewing the assumptions on the revenue side and the expense side for the budget, so we're gonna dive into the budget now. Uh, there's a, there's a lot to go over here, let me see if there's anything, you know, terribly new to point out. Okay, so, one really important point of clarification, that is something we haven't done in the past, is the COLA of two-point-seven-one is not included on the revenue side or the expense side, it's not included anywhere. We were just too concerned with the change to the new funding formula and not understanding how they would incorporate the COLA into the new funding formula, that, we, we feel confident we were gonna get it, but it might have been that with no new funding formula. And we didn't wanna build it into the revenue side, not knowing how it would lay out in the expense side, so it's just nowhere right now. Which, kind of makes it simpler, because if you put it in one side or the other, it skews the deficit by quite a bit of money, uh, you know, two-million dollars. So it's not in either side right now. So we'll be building that in with the adopted budget. Um, trying to think, another big one was that they did award us for the Deferred Maintenance and Instructional Equipment Grant, one-point-seven-million dollars, that's the one that we can choose how we wanna split it. So that's just, that's just nice. I, I always like, feel relieved when we get that money, because we tend to put some of it towards deferred maintenance, and it helps with that facilities issues that we have. When that's really small, it kind of makes me, makes me nervous of how are we gonna fix things. Let's see what else. I think I'm gonna keep going here. Is the FTS, this slide is a little easier to look at on the FTS than just reading about it. So in terms of FTS and our budget assumptions, which now, this will only be, uh, you know, seventy percent of our revenue sourced instead of a hundred percent. But we're really projecting the bulk of our FTS, the present, credit resident, to just be, just be stable. So, no, no major upper-down changes, um, nothing too, too different there. Now, the non-credit piece, like we talked about earlier, the School of Extended Learning continues to grow substantially. So, the percentage change looks really dramatic at a hundred percent, fifty percent. But keep in mind, the actual numbers of FTS are very, very small. But, uh, it's really exciting that we're seeing that program continue to grow. And it's, it's really important for us that we grow those programs out at shot and awake, because of the way the campus center, uh, status funding works as well. I think we've talked about that a little bit. But as the number of students out there declines, the number of, it's just a base dollar amount we get for those facilities declines, and we've kind of, we've declined over the last couple of years. So it'll be nice to be able to bump it back up as we go. We won't be able to next year, but, you know, hopefully the following year, that'll come into play, so that helps. And then, uh, out-of-state and international, just flat, we're not expecting any, any changes with those.
On the School of Extended Learning, that was a very purposeful discussion that we had, um, in President's Cabinet. You know, should we go ahead and grow that? Should we hold it back? Should we throttle it back? Should we not let it grow as fast? And, yeah, I made the decision that we need to continue growing it as fast as we possibly can, with quality in mind, obviously. Um, to be able to bring the, um, s- uh, center status, foundation center status back up, because we were right on the cusp, I mean, within, like, twenty FTS, I think.
Really close.
Of losing, like, what is it, half a million dollars or more?
Yeah, two-hundred-and-fifty each step, yeah.
Significant dollars, you know, by, by losing the, the FTS. So, we wanted to really get it up there unquestionably, and that's the direction and the path that we're on right now. So, I just wanted to give you some logic behind that.
Yeah, that's the money we get simply for having either a center or a campus.
Exactly.
Right.
It's a block.
Depending on how many students are using it, that money changes.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah. So, this is just a slide to give everybody an idea of, of how the FTS are, are broken down. This, this particular year, it's kind of interesting, because it shows that the resident credit goes down, and it doesn't really go down. The number of FTS remain the same, but the piece of the pie got smaller, because non-credit has gotten larger. So that's, that's what this is showing there. Okay, on the expense side, all of our excitement and changes have really been on the revenue side this year. But on the expense side, again, clarify, COLA's not included, but it will be, uh, uh, there will be inclusion of it in some form or fashion when we understand the new, new funding formula. The only change with the hourlies, we were able, a lot of departments through the BRAC process really did give up more hourly money, which is wonderful, and a few more still needed, uh, additional augmentations. But overall, there was a hundred-thousand-dollar increase on hourly, again, specific to the School of Extended Learning and ramping that up. And, that's, in the classroom, they need some additional assistance. The health benefits, we were very pleasantly relieved when, uh, our broker for our health benefits came to us with a decrease in our medical costs, which is amazing.
Rare.
Yes, very rare.
Unheard of.
Yeah, unheard of. Um, it's wonderful, we have a really strong pool here. So, that's actually a savings that most other, uh, you know, businesses of all type are not experiencing. And PERS and STIRS, you know, we haven't talked about it a ton lately, but remember, PERS and STIRS just keeps going up, going up, going up. These dollars, the, the dollar amounts, not the percentages, but the dollar amounts are much better than they would have been if we wouldn't have done the SERP and we weren't reducing our staffing. Our original projections for STIRS and PERS would, would be more of a, a million-dollar a year increase, so, or, you know, less, less than a million dollars. So that's, that's good, but this is just gonna continue to happen for many, many years. They're going up, gosh, I should have printed out the numbers, but, uh, the percentages are increasing well over twenty percent over the next few years. So, it's a, it's a systemic problem that we continue to beg the state to help us deal with. Um, okay. Instruction supplies. Let's see. What more do we have? A lot more specific detail in terms of our revenues. So you always have to remember that our, our revenues are always funded in a year lag, so the FTS are based on the prior year. So it can be kind of confusing when you look at the revenues and you see them going down, when you know that we've actually stabilized. But, it's that one-year lag can be kind of complex. Um, something I am getting asked, uh, every once in a while is, what's happening with the property taxes in the Montecito mudslide? Does that impact us? Um, it, it really doesn't, because of our total computational revenue. If we get less in property taxes, the state will pick up more and give us apportionment, because they, they have promised to give us a whole, whole piece of the pie, and it just depends on which part of the pie we get. So, that, that doesn't impact us, it does impact some other, you know, uh, schools. What else? Revenue breakdown, you guys, you're all experts at this now.
Okay.
Um, the expense side, getting more specifics. You see the employee benefits going up, that's PERS and STIRS. There's a lot of details on the other side, but I'm remembering some of these just offhand. That three-hundred-thousand in other operating is, is primarily one million, your IT, that's gonna save us a lot of money over the coming years. So, it's a really worthwhile investment to move our Oracle into the cloud, to a new system. Let me see. Here you're seeing the RAP savings as well, that we talked about. So, a lot of details here, but it's, it's kind of things we've, we've covered. Keep going. So here, here's the, the bottom line. You can see the deficit of the five-point-five-million are beginning fund balance and ending fund balance. The transfers, uh, we used to spend a lot of time talking about the transfers and exactly what they were. I even pulled them out of this presentation, because they've gotten much more simple, for good and bad reasons. Uh, bad reasons, because we don't have a lot of money to transfer anywhere. I wish we had more transfers to other places. But you'll see the transfer in here is, we're transferring all the remaining, uh, reserves available from the non-credit side that have been there for a while, transferring it into the general fund to help offset these implementation costs. And then that reserve will be wiped out, there, it won't, none of it will be left. And again, we had planned to do that over three years, we transferred a third this year. Um, but we're gonna just move all of it over, since we're ramping it up all the way. So, uh, that's that transfer in amount. The transfer outs, uh, Children's Center's been pretty consistent over the years, uh, two-hundred-thousand, this year it was two-hundred-and-fifty, so it's a little bit less. And then the construction fund, uh, five-hundred-and-forty, this year it was six-hundred-and-fifteen. And that transfer is just to cover emergency repairs. And, boy, do we spend every penny of it sadly. I tried to trim it down as much as possible. Um, so, that's what that amount is. Getting into the fund balances, so, let's see. Let me describe this, because we do have some, some new trustees. So, we created, how long ago was it now? Three years ago, four years ago, a board policy with our, about our minimum fund balance, our reserve amounts. And in that policy, we mapped out these, these numbers here. So, in our reserves, we're required by the state to have a five-percent contingency of what our expenditures are. So that's what these amounts are for each year. And then we put in the policy that we wanna have a reserve set aside for our bank TLUs. And we can explain that if somebody needs help knowing what TLUs are. Uh, in the past, there were deferrals where the state wasn't gonna pay us. So, this is a reminder to us, and we do have it in the policy, that if there are deferrals, we wanna put that aside as well, but we don't have that right now. And then we agreed that we wanted to have an additional fifteen percent of our expenditures set aside in our reserve. So it means that our, our, uh, reserve balance needs to be about twenty-one percent of our expenditures, is how that works out. So, looking at what would be the end of eighteen-nineteen, these are the balances that need to be in our, uh, reserve. And due to the deficit, you, you can go back, you can see, see the five-million, takes away from the twenty, twenty-five-million, and you end up at the nineteen-million. So, we actually have a negative, undesignated amount. And we're, we're kind of used to being kind of a bit over that, uh, fund balance. And our favorite slide with the gold bar, this is what it looks like, uh, for us for eighteen-nineteen. And, the construction fund, so, the green bar is the construction fund, the red is the equipment fund, and the blue is the general fund. And, those are all reserves for the college, so we put them all together in one place, they really are all general fund reserves. But we do have them earmarked in different funds. And, the construction fund balances, you can see, we still have the campus center earmarked in its own fund. And, uh, the end of eighteen-nineteen, it'll be down to ten-point-six, and that's because we have decided to do the, the seismic work on the building, and, and, uh, that'll cost us, I, I have a, a real estimate in there, because I don't have an actual estimate yet, uh, that we'll spend about a million and a half on that, but I'm waiting for a, a firm number on that. So, we're dropping just a little bit below that, that, uh, minimum fund balance of twenty-point-seven. But with the adopted budget, you know, this should look much better, and we wouldn't be dropping below that. I think I did it.
Super compliments to Lindsay and, uh, and James on putting this all together. Fantastic job, huge amount of work, um, late-night hours. I'm getting strange emails at one o'clock in the morning, yes, I noticed the time. Lindsay and James. Um, but really fantastic yeoman's work on this, and I'm just real proud of, of where we're headed with this. Lots of things still up in the air, obviously with the new funding formula. Um, it's gonna be really fascinating to see how that all shakes out. We, we, we've, we've seen numbers all over the map, from six-point-six-million potentially, um, and then significantly less than that. So we're, we're thinking, it's gonna, we can be, be confident that it'll be a plus number, but we're just not sure of what. It's likely not gonna be the six-point-six-million, but it'll be, you know, somewhere between three and five, maybe. So we'll have to see.
Yes, you certainly know your audience, Lindsay. She was like, I'm not gonna put that in there, because they're gonna ask me a question, so let's just take care of it.
I don't do that.
And why confuse them? They're a curious crowd. Um, no, it, thank you. Um, Trystee Farmer, I know this is your new time here, but was there any lingering thoughts, observations, or anything that you were wondering about? Because when, when we all got this, we were used to being these smaller mini-meetings, and we had questions about everything, like, so please feel free to.
I sit on RAP, I've sat on BRAC before, CPC, so, because I've seen this a few times.
Anybody else, any thoughts, questions from Lindsay or James?
I, I have a question, but Peter mentioned.
Yeah. Peter.
Well, I was curious, at the very beginning, we talked about.
Well, I was curious, at the very beginning, we talked about the state providing supplemental funding to ensure that some colleges whose whose, let's say, performance uh ratio was not up for snuff. Um, how long is that projected to continue? Is there
Yeah, they're talking about doing that for three years.
Three years.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do we have, do we have a sense of of when the the adults at Sacramento are actually gonna tell us what's going on?
That's what we've been saying every day for the last, yeah, six months. Uh, right now, they're writing the trailer bill language, and those trailer bills spell out the details of how all this is calculated. I was told that should be done, like, by the end of June, worst case. So, by the end of June, worst case, we should have those details. But the part that's a little more nebulous is how long will it take them to do the calculations and give us simulations? I don't, I don't know, I'm hoping they're doing those kind of at the same time. Fingers are crossed, but worst case, we're thinking beginning of July, and we're kind of unfortunately just waiting. There's quite, there's quite a lot of pressure on the chancellor's office to get everyone numbers right away. I mean, they're they're getting emails and phone calls, I'm sure, daily, so I know, I know they're working on it.
Yeah.
There are any number of times, uh, maybe when I've acknowledged, at least to myself, yours is a job I would never want.
Ever. I love my job.
It's a compliment to the soldiers.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Thank you. I think you really did a great job, Lindsay, of condensing the information. And making a generalized projection of what's going on to the best you can. I, with everything that's going on, it looks like we're actually gonna be better off possibly than if they hadn't made any changes.
Right.
And so I'm I'm pretty positive about these changes, even though we don't know exactly to the dollar what they're gonna be. This is overall very, very good news for us. And I feel like it kind of bodes for the college, the faculty, the staff, the administration because they've put this college in a great position to weather all this storm. We don't have to make huge, the huge changes of focus that so many other colleges in the state have to make. So, uh, thank you so much for a very concise presentation. And I realize you could have gone on for hours.
Yeah. It's hard for me not to. Yeah.
Now, you and James have lived this forever, that, so.
We, okay, um, we usually have in our normal budget year, I know this is the unusual. We usually have faculty workshops, we usually have the staff come at noon or whatever.
You do usually do that.
And I guess none of those have happened because of the strangeness. And is there any plan to let people know when we finally get some numbers?
Absolutely. Yeah, I had multiple meetings on the calendar, and two days before, I I have to cancel it because
I understand.
It's rough, it, once you publish a number, and if it's probably wrong, people seem to remember the number forever. So, it's better not to put things out there that we know aren't gonna be, you know, close to accurate, but absolutely, yeah.
So, in the fall?
In the fall, yeah, we'll do a, yeah, we'll do an explanation of everything that's gone on, and people need to see the updated projections and understand this, any strategy we have, strategic goals, you know, savings in different areas, or whatever it is we're doing.
And also why they missed the meetings in the spring.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's good.
Thanks, Ben.
We're really leaning towards trying to be as accurate as we can in a very inaccurate environment, you know, so I mean, that's difficult. And the colleges that are moving rapidly forward with just putting together a tentative budget just to have it.
Yeah.
Um, which we know, which they know, and everyone knows
Change.
are completely wrong, and they're just pulling numbers out of the air for the most part. Um, we decided that it's better to to try to get something a little bit more, you know, kind of stable and solid to to base our numbers on.
No, I understand, good, that's good.
Yes.
Um, this is more of a comment, I think, than a question, but it seems to me that we are look looking ahead, the next month or two, we may be receiving essentially a windfall.
Potentially.
And uh, with all windfalls, uh, can, do do we use that windfall? Do we, do we apply it all to deficit reduction? Do we, do we put it into a an emergency fund? Do we, what what do we do with it? Because w- we are, we already seem to be on a good path without the windfall. And, you know, we sat here tonight and heard about air conditioning problems of critical nature in some buildings, other you know, when I hear about sewer eruptions, it just, it it's horrifying. Um, and we face other challenges. I mean, there there are, there are other issues that the college faces and will probably always face. So, I guess, to me, I think we need to be thinking about uh, how we're gonna apply whatever that windfall is.
Yes, um, just a quick comment on that. You're absolutely right. Um, I think it would be a mistake to use whatever windfall, as you you call it, to do nothing but deficit reduction. That isn't gonna be a strategic uh plan. It's not gonna help us with some of the things that you mentioned, the some of the things that we've heard already with facilities and other things. Uh, but certainly, we'll use a chunk of it towards that, and then remaining, we'll have a strategic conversation about how to best um, continue the the path that we're on right now in terms of, you know, the momentum with Gaia Pathways, momentum with other things that are really important to students and faculty and staff to be able to continue our success. Just a general, I I need to make a general comment about the funding formula change. You know, when community colleges were first developed back in the early nineteen hundreds, the idea was all about access. Let's just get in as many people as we can. And then, um, that same funding formula, if you will, although it's been modified, has continued. Um, so everything has been based on enrollment, and how many people you can get through the college, or get into the college, I should say. Well, this change based on performance-based funding is really to continue the access piece, which is now seventy percent this year or this coming year. And then incorporate some performance-based funding related to completion, related to how we serve underrepresented students, poor students in particular. And so, we're looking at a different, a different way of getting funded. And to your point, um, Robert, the idea that some some colleges have not done as well with the completion component. Um, they're not, they're not gonna be getting as much, and they're the ones that need to be held harmless. We at Santa Barbara City College have done an extraordinary job in getting students through. So, our our metrics that they're proposing to fund us on are extraordinary. And so, that's where, that's where the windfall, if you will, comes in, is that we're actually getting rewarded now for doing an extraordinary job of getting students through and the success components of all of that.
We could say we earned.
Yeah, we earned our way through, so it's not really so much of a windfall, we've earned it, earned it all the way along. We're just getting rewarded for it now.
Yeah, I I did want to add something critical that I should have said earlier that uh I was reminded of now, is the other piece of uh the new funding formula that was requested at the very, very end of this process in June was that a uh a task force work on revising it in greater detail. So, we have this seventy, twenty, ten split, and these different metrics they're talking about right now. But for the next year, the CBO group has asked that they be allowed to provide additional input and that they be able to spend the year revising, doing simulations, looking at this. And that means that that it may change again. So, and there's, and there's, yeah, and it likely will. So, in bringing up what do we do with this windfall, one, spend it on one-time expenses, ongoing expenses? You know, most folks are thinking we, you know, we should be careful, that the system should be careful in allocating it to ongoing expenses because it may, it may shift again, and we won't know exactly what we're getting uh in the future years until this is really resolved. Because trying to put together an entire new funding formula in just six months was uh, a very short amount of time, and most folks would like to see more work done, more analysis done to understand the long-term impacts on all the different colleges.
Just one last comment to beat the dead horse, I guess. Um, some of the CEOs have been talking about looking at at this, you know, amount of money that's potentially positive for us as one-time money. Uh, not looking at it like it's continuous money, or at least squirreling away part of it as a contingency. Um, ten percent, twenty percent, whatever it might be, as a contingency to to cover some of the changes that could be down the road in terms of the funding formula itself and the metrics. So, there's lots of different theories with all of it, but.
Yeah, I would support, like, the first thing we do is take money off for reserve or contingency for the future. But also, I think some of this money could be spent one time to I mean, we know that even if they revise, it's still gonna be how many low-income students, students of color and people graduate. It's gonna be something like that still. So, I think we should invest in programs that help us get more students of color and low-income students, and help people get like I'm sure there's one time things we can do that help get our metrics even better, that can then get us more money next time.
Mm-hmm.
You're talking about like mission money, to make sure that it's for direct access type of spending.
Yes, directed towards the, you know, metrics they're looking at so that in the future, it'll just, you know, spend money to make money, kind of thing.
Give me more money.
Were you gonna follow up?
I'll just, yes, I'd just to say, really, I I guess it's really not a windfall, it's just this is odd, I mean, whatever additional funding we receive this year over what we thought we were gonna have, we're gonna, we theoretically would have that additional fund the next year, the next year, the next year.
Assuming.
Assuming that the it stays the same, and maybe becomes as they, as they phase in these formulas.
Well, as, yeah, as they phase it in, we would get more because we do well with these metrics.
Might even be more fair.
Right.
That's right, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, these are tremendously important points, both that we earned it and that um, as Lindsay says, it may not be the same as we go forward as people realize the impacts. Um, and uh, and I think it's tremendously important to be thinking about that, and I like the direction that you're going. Um, because I think we are conservative thinkers in this regard. The legislature, as as you know, Jonathan, is is trying to be pretty clear that they want it invested in success for underrepresented and low-income students. That's what they're trying to push. And so, our investment in that is, yes, our investment is that, in that is what they want.
Which is fantastic for us, that's our vision, that's our mission.
I had a different set of questions, so I don't know if other people want to comment on this theme first.
Does the, does the seventy, twenty, ten follow what Jonathan was saying?
That does.
Well, Lindsay, that start referring to the percentage that you showed us in the beginning.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, it's the same, the same uh setup where it's based, and then
With only twenty percent for equity allocation.
You got it.
From page six.
Yep, yep, follows it. Yeah, so as they increase, as they decrease the base funding on FTS and increase the other metrics, we in theory will get more money because we do really well with those metrics. We do better than than some schools. Other schools are, do even better, and they're gonna receive a very substantial amount of money from this. But some are doing worse. And a lot of it, like, the low-income piece, uh, some of the discussion is, well, how do we, how do we control that? You know, students come who are either low-income or they're not, uh, depending on where they they're located, what their school's located, so that one is, you know, an interesting one.
And is that still self-reported, or is now, is that now verified through fast line taxes?
I don't know, yeah, that's, I don't know, that's the tricky part is how do they figure all this out? How do they determine, that's what'll be in the trailer bill language, is where, where do we get this data?
Because, I I mean, with, that was sort of a con to with the LCAP, and it, I mean, with the economy getting better, I mean, we were hoping, well, don't you want to have less kids on free and reduced lunch? And it just was sort of like this question, where yes, you wanna, you wanna feed them, uh, and have them qualify, but just the K T O community, we were like, but the idea would be that we would have less families as a metric for bettering our community in Santa Barbara. I don't want to see half of the school roster being on free and reduced bog, which is the equivalent of bog, you know?
Right.
So, but for ours, I know for a while it was just sort of self-reported. I say I make this, and we just, it was on the honor system, so the state still has no way of.
I don't know, I'd have to ask my financial aid experts.
Are we talking about for enrollment for City College?
Yeah, you know, when you enroll and you fill out the form that says yeah, I don't know.
Wait, we don't know this?
Yeah.
We don't know this?
The FAFSA is, the FAFSA is based on
Well, I'm just saying that
I don't know.
Best stuff we should know, though, in the board, but
How the FAFSA waiver is determined.
Yeah, it's determined by your income, so.
No, we know how it works, it's because the student can write whatever dollar amount they want, and it's not verified.
Oh, okay.
We sign up for FAFSA. In the, in the application, for bog, for bog.
No, the bog.
Or the governor's waiver, which is now called the college promise.
I don't know, so that's never happened for me, but I don't know of that.
If you go through the financial lady, not that we, you know, your parents and taxes, but the bog itself is just like, my name is so-and-so, this is how much I make. And there's a little box in the back that shows you the income per family size and yeah, dear Marcia, could she have?
Okay, so on a different topic, couple of topics. Um, one is, um, we had, we are working on initiatives, the RAP, the increase in efficiency to basically right-size for our declining enrollment. And fortunately, what we're projecting now is some stability, but we're still right-sized. And RAP is continuing, and efficiency is continuing, and it looks like, um, we hit it right on the mark, you said, for the RAP, and so we have a lot of happiness going forward, thinking we can, we can do this. Um, not that it's easy, but that we can. And um, for the efficiency component, it looks like we did not hit the mark. Um, and so, for me, I think it's important to keep that perspective, to understand how we missed it, why we missed it, and what we can do and how long it's gonna take to get there still, because it's important to get there. Um, and part of that is not jumping too quickly to this new more money thing because then you lose track of, well, what happened to our efficiency goals? You know, we were gonna make it up in part, uh, reduce our deficit with with better efficiency. So, um, I just would like to make a plug for keeping our eye on that, maybe getting a separate conversation on what happened with efficiency, so that we understand better. How did, how did it play out? What, you you mentioned that we've changed what our expectations. We had an expectation last year, an assumption of ten percent increase in efficiency and a savings for that. Um, we didn't get there, we still need to get there, what's our new plan in that regard? And I don't think we need to do it today. Uh, same thing for the SERF, maybe a look back on how's it going? Um, you know, did we get where we hoped to get uh on that? That won't change, but but at least it's a status sort of thing. Another thought is, as we do the new projections, the uh another component of this new legislation is the online college. We have a big chunk of online FTS. And so, I'm thinking, to the extent we can figure out timelines for the online college, start guestimating the impact on us, we should be doing that. Um, and maybe it's way too soon, but I'm just putting it out there for us to be thinking about.
We are thinking about it, matter of fact, we talked about it today, Kenley and I. Um, in terms of impact and and some of those kinds of things. That's still a statewide conversation that's gonna be ongoing. Um, but absolutely, we're gonna be looking at, to see, as are all the colleges, the hundred and fifteen community colleges in the state, looking at how that's going to impact their enrollments.
So, so the the idea that what you're raising is we start losing students to the online college.
Or losing those FTS that we now have, drawn on, yeah.
And you're, I think, I grabbed everything because I know what you guys were gonna ask, but I think you're referring to the enrollment management and the efficiency and the projections and the five forty target and all that.
Correct, and and last September, we had um another wonderful presentation. And by the way, these are just terrific.
So, just for you, Robert, and and student Tristi Farmer, so the um, the board retreat from February tenth um, has those attachments on there, and might be worth, it was the handouts enrollment management, and sort of talks a lot about what Marcia's referring to, and so that might be good to just look around to that presentation and look at those handouts, because that's where all this
We can send those to
Was, yeah, and that hit on that. It was sort of like It was sort of like this idea of this sort of goal, what would that look like and if we got to a five forty efficiency and whatnot but um seen as though I mean this was only February two thousand seventeen, it still was fairly new to me, I think so. So I think that definitely, yeah, I mean the fact that you guys are still learning and figuring this out is is appropriate to still, you know, to come to something.
Oh, you know and and we are absolutely on the path to making sure that we are running the college the most efficiently we possibly can without losing quality and cutting back too bad. It's always a it's always a balancing act but one of the things on my list with the the new interim executive vice president uh Dr. Rolston is to to talk to her about efficiencies, what we've done, what we've talked about, where we're headed, our goals, the five twenty-five, the five forty how how we we can get there. Um Dr. Drell certainly worked very hard to try to to make progress on that but that that's a whole culture shift. We've never really thought much about that, the efficiency aspects of that in any great detail um in years past. Um you know, we've we've managed the college well in years past but this is a different dimension and like I say, a culture shift. Uh so we will definitely be continuing on that that path.
Yeah, and I appreciate that because what I'm really saying is it's still important.
Yes.
And and so we need to remember to continue to pay attention to it.
Well, it frees up money. It frees up money to be able to do other things and serve students in different ways and so on so forth. So yeah, it's it's.
The whole point, the Gaia pathways and all the other related thing.
Mm-hmm.
Um so one other thing which for me is confusing, for others it may not be. But it was apparent in the discussion on page eleven of your presentation that our annual budget and thank you for explaining this because it was not apparent to me before this, that our annual budget does not include the efficiency improvements, the RAP, um the uh.
Annual budget does have a little bit of the efficiency in it. We just scaled it down but it does. And it did this year as well in seventeen eighteen, yeah.
Okay, well I read that is does not include strategic initiative savings that's
Yeah, I know.
thought was efficiency.
Yeah, yeah, it does have it does have that but not to the level of the projections, yeah.
But anyway. Okay. Okay, well then I would call that out in the assumptions. I would say in our standard assumption page say
Mm-hmm.
we assume X percent increase in efficiency for this year and so much for the next following years would be helpful to know too.
Okay.
Um because it becomes an inherent assumption in the budget.
Mm-hmm.
And then with the RAP, I get what you're saying about okay, where do I put it? 'Cause I don't know who it is.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
To me though, leaving it out gives us a less accurate budget and what I'm really don't wanna have is what we used to do in the old days, which is over-budget expenditures and then say, oh look, that all be savings.
Yeah.
So I don't want the RAP to be a surprise savings because in the old days even we were canceling classes on the idea that there wasn't enough money when in fact there was money. Like it was over-budgeting. It was giving the appearance of not enough money.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
So um I wanna s- really put that out there in an effective way, whether it's a line item in the budget that says uh we strategic initiative line item. We hope to save this and then it gets subtracted out, which wouldn't improve our deficit right now if it were in there.
Yeah.
Um but it tells us again and again what we were trying to do.
Yeah.
And it tries to get those numbers close to what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I think one primary difference between you know today and in the past is the projections. Fact that we're doing projections and we have those goals and strategic initiatives written into that and we're projecting out five years and we're talking about it. I would've liked to have presented them more often this year but if we keep talking about them, looking at them a couple times a year, it's I mean to me, it's not gonna go away. We're we're looking at this all the time going how do we continue to get to where we wanna be? So I hear you and I hear your concern but I think we're in a different a different place because of the projections and being really strategic about our finances.
Well, I I agree. The projections are huge. Um what I want though is this correspondence between the assumptions and the projections and the ac- and the budget.
The budget.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I want them to have the same thought process, the same
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
uh numbers appearing.
Yeah.
I see I see what you're saying, Marshall. I think we would all agree with that but then I go back to your earlier point that you don't wanna put out a number that is, you know, necessarily not exactly and I just I
That's all.
For example, I mean I think what we got on February tenth to what we're getting today, I mean this looks much better than where I was sitting at that even as delicious as the sandwiches were. You know, you're like, what? And you know, the numbers didn't look so hot back then and it looks prettier today. So like I wanna put that on top of that one now, you know, and so I see both. I see that, yeah, we wanna get it sense but I do, I I would err I would side to just like sort of the trade path that you guys have been going on to really be strategic about what you put out and making sure that 'cause people get.
Well, I'm I'm thinking these things are initiatives that we really need to do and therefore an accurate budget says they're in there. Um that's what I'm thinking but you know, I realize there's given viewpoints on that question.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I'm I'm kind of hearing that when we put out, I'm feeling that when we put out the projections and our plan, like that we're doing it.
Yeah.
I mean when I present to different groups, here's the projections, here's the goals, like that's happening.
Yeah.
So that's kind of been the way I felt about it and heard other people talk about it too. Yeah.
You're not just doing it.
Yeah, I don't I don't feel like we do anything like that here.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying. I think it's authentic and you guys are really 'cause it's committed to what the steps are gonna be to happen.
No.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oops, sir. Jane, Lindsay, thank you. Guys.
Yep.
Okay, guys really ramped up and are living in your department. Probably literally, are they gonna go home?
Mm-hmm. Just stay here all the time.
Yeah, our facilities guys never go home. I can tell you that.
Um okay, item six point two, this is first reading for revision to board policies, chapter two.
Well, you're just you just it's it's the one policy, board policy twenty four ten.
I don't have my computer. I don't know what I'm reading. Yes, you're right. Oh, we on the bottom down here. Yes.
Yes.
Uh board policy twenty four ten, not the whole chapter. Thank you, Angie. Oh my gosh, be here all night.
No, no, not the whole chapter.
Here it is, this one. So.
Yes, Marty.
Oh, go ahead. If you have my presentation.
No, there's no presentation really. It's just uh there's a small edit.
Oh, I can see it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
That was me.
I hope this is what I'm looking at.
No.
gets funded to.
Yeah, that's why I searched the change.
So this is the correction to the issues people had back in November or October when we first passed this change?
Going back through that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It also gives us some flexibility um in terms of uh board policy, the sixty day board policy timeline.
Yeah.
Um particularly during the summer, you know, it it gives us more time. It gives us more flexibility.
Summer's tough.
Yeah.
Yeah, I raised the flexibility issue and and I think this is a good attempt to address it. I still do read it as
Mm-hmm.
um depends on the subject. So one of the subjects we talked about was
Yeah, we're.
we extended your e- evaluation date by
Oh, right.
I don't know, a couple weeks or a month or something like that. That's a very administrative board CEO thing. It's not college-wide, I think. But that's the only one I know of off the top of my head that would fit that category. I'm just theoretically, there could be other stuff like that.
But this would cover like emergencies and you know, and unfortunately we did live through the
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And emergencies.
We were all just kind of on standby as a board of like canceling the meetings and then scheduling and then canceling them and so
Yeah.
um I feel like this kind of does capture that should, God forbid, something happened that you could
Right.
Mm-hmm.
act on us to act and or calling us to act on something.
Right.
Right, yeah, you 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 need that flexibility for for those those times.
But we don't expect that.
Nope. So this is just first reading?
It's just first reading, yeah. I mean anything
Yeah.
guys good? Yeah, that was easy. Good. Moving on to item six point three and that is this is just uh to reapprove board policy thirty two eighty and
No, actually this one you're re- re approving the whole chapter.
Reapproving. Oh my gosh, John, Angie's your computer.
Yeah.
You're not having a computer.
I need to pull up. There's two of them.
You're re- uh re approving the whole chapter and the the two attachments or something that's.
I know.
Your computer.
This is one of the changes.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's why Angie is here.
Uh.
We wanted you to look at those.
She goes, do you want do you want a computer? And I I go, I go, no, take your binder.
I have.
You know what I'm doing with the binder.
So we're going through our normal review process of each of the chapters in the board policies.
Review process.
Yeah. Oh, there's this George here.
Yeah.
I'm like, oh, where'd you get a MacBook?
Yeah. I got a special.
Well, Angie, you gave him a MacBook. I like your notebook. It's fast. It was the first time I'd ever used one actually.
And so when we go through each one of the chapters, we'll have some board policies that have edits in them. Yeah. And and that's what we have here with thirty two eighty and thirty five fifty five.
Mm-hmm. Right.
This one's not a major edit. It's just like.
It's added.
Mm-hmm.
By the grand office.
Yeah, and then with thirty five fifty five added the cannabis and the.
Yeah. Cannabis too, right.
Yeah.
I figured that had to happen since, yeah.
She's appropriate with the new.
Yep, new ones.
And so is uh um I just thought of that when you said cannabis. Is it E- the E-cigarette Institute, the vapor?
They were already included in the cigarettes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I don't see it on here. Is it ordered in?
No, no, it says that electronic cigarette.
Oh, I think it's electronic cigarettes.
Oh, got it. Thank you. Thank you. I'd seen it before.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like everything new is just relating to cannabis.
Yeah, okay.
Just treating it the same.
This one's expounding upon what we're already on that.
Good, thanks.
Okay.
Is this for reaction? It is.
So, yes, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve both policies.
And. There's second.
Well, it's a chapter.
Or.
Chapter three, yeah, chapter three.
Oh, both. Both chapter, chapter three. Motion to approve the new chapter three. How about that?
Okay.
Any discussion?
Any discussion? We kind of discussed it a little bit.
Oh, yes. This BP thirty five fifty five?
Yeah.
This includes like um vapes and E pens and all that.
Electronic, mm-hmm.
Yeah, the last paragraph I I that was my question too. It works.
Mm-hmm.
Stuff whatever they dream up.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay.
Oh, yeah. It's like a ketchup thing but yeah.
You guys all look really interested. You guys are all like this with your computers like this.
No.
Vapes, cannabis, what?
I know.
Try to get my crew.
Uh.
So it doesn't exclude using like top core edible cannabis products like.
Yeah.
What about?
I think it's chew, yeah, this the chewable stuff.
It it does talk about cannabis products.
This is this is chewing tobacco or any other smoking equipment.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's it's. Yeah.
But cannabis isn't necessarily smoked.
The use of doing cannabis products.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, right there, right there, the first paragraph.
The products.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Just covers it all.
There you go. 'Cause then, yeah, 'cause it goes into the details later.
Yes.
It doesn't include those details but it's I don't think it's necessary.
Oh, what?
Yeah.
What about people um
They need brownies to.
Exception of like health reasons. I know some people have to smoke weed for health reasons.
Do you need to take that into consideration?
Okay, no, I'm.
Kelly, did we?
Uh well, this is a smoke-free campus.
Yeah.
Uh you can take medical marijuana while you're here on campus if you have a prescription for that or other reasons 'cause that's just like any other uh prescription that you would receive. Uh but unless we're deciding to change from a smoke-free campus, uh they cannot smoke marijuana or cannabis on campus even if they have a prescription for it.
But you could use an edible if you have a medical.
Correct, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That's what you're using?
So this this being here specifically about smoking.
So it's the the smoke. So the smoke is the issue.
Is the about smoking, only smoking.
Adults smoke cannabis, but advocating for.
Making note of that.
So noted.
So any further discussion? Okay, so seeing as this other discussion has been moved and seconded that we approve board policies chapter two.
Thank.
Uh oh.
Three.
Yeah, three.
Three.
Three. It is moved and seconded that we approve board policies chapter three.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thanks. Okay, motion carries.
That's good.
And with that, is there a motion to adjourn to closed session?
Yes, by all means.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's true.
Let's do it.
And for folks in the room wondering what we are doing, where we're going, we will move over to eighteen eighteen to meet with our superintendent president.
Okay.
So you can come with us.
Alright, I will.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good job.